I'd like to call the town council from special meeting to order for Wednesday, March 26th, at 5:05 PM. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Mr. Naukaski.
Mr. Dinkley.
Here.
Mr. Conlon.
Present.
Mr. Yelwski.
Present.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Tracso.
Here.
Attorney Oshin.
Present.
Chief Cruzan.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Chief Dolly.
Here.
Mr. Pintar.
Here.
Mr. Hewitt.
Here.
Mr. Bolton.
Here.
Robert Teal. And Ms. Naukaski, present.
Thank you. This evening, we're meeting here to consider the proposal by Representative Peter Davis-Klosky regarding the extension of South Shore rail line. We defer this from March 12th to the 14th meeting. And as regarding the request that regarding the South Shore extension going to Dyer be considered by all communities in Lake County to assist with funding of this new extension. At this time, as we've done before in other council meetings, I'd like to open this up to the floor regarding comments regarding this proposal and consideration through these evenings. So if anyone in the audience wants to speak regarding this item before we consider it, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bill Primo. I live in Charlotte, Charlotte. I just want to say, I've talked to my councilman about it, we've talked about it. I don't know what else is here to talk about, but just to say I'm opposed. You know, we've been starved for funds for all along. Our city, our city's money is finally here. And I'm not happy about giving, you know, $1,800 extra a year, but it's there. I think that money needs, there's so many things that these gentlemen over here have to do. Putting off, not a great job, maintaining what we've gotten by. Now that money's here. And look, I mean, at 571 million, you guys are all business bended out in the mills and worked your whole life. Does anybody really believe that that number is true? That that's where that number will stand when the first passenger gets out of that train? It will be 571 million, or is it going to be a billion and a quarter? Because we know that's where it's going to end up. And then how about the money to maintain it? You know, keep it, the cars repaired, the tracks, and all the other liabilities that go along with it. And the other thing is, is look, I don't know, I guess there might be, I was just told tonight that there is a study, and if there's a link on Shererville Log or com.org, or maybe the county gov, if I can see it, I'd like to know that. But I haven't seen anything published that says there's a study that proves or gives any kind of empirical data that shows us that there will be the return, you know, that Viscoski speaks of, and I think about the money coming back from Chicago and all these jobs. You know, look, I doubt like Pete Viscoski, I've spent in steel work for 36 years. I mean, he's done a lot of things for this, you know, for us as an industry and for this environment. But I mean, you know, are we really going to get that money back? I mean, don't we have enough things to do around here? I mean, you know, I know you guys are still deciding on 9/11, you know, the money they want for that. I mean, this money's being picked apart so quick, so fast. I think our local areas here need this money now. Jobs, yeah, it's going to create jobs. Most of it's temporary, you know, maybe, you know, a three-year bill or four-year bill, but it's going to go away. The majority of that, other than it's going to be, what, 20 ticket takers and something like that? I don't know. But I haven't seen any of that, that I think you guys have, so that you can make a more intelligent decision on that. I mean, a billion dollars for this rail line. I just, I mean, give our money out of this community, you know, we've waited so long for it to finally be able to do the things that we need it. Look at the roads. I mean, yeah, the winter was tough. We needed it on the roads long before this winter. And these guys, as I said, City Council's done a great job, you know, helped out on that, combined with the money. I just, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I think people that are going to ride the train to Chicago that have jobs there are going to do that with their Chicagoer drive. I just, I believe that. So I mean, that's my opinion on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is George Gidhamski, Accordian, Buffalo Drive, Shererville, Indiana. I support this extension for the following reasons. If anybody from this community goes up to Hammond or a head wish, they'll find it very difficult to find a parking place to take the train to Chicago. People in our area who have traveled to Germany, France, Japan, tell us what a marvelous train system they have. There is no system in this world that is fully funded out of the fare box. Every country has to kick in a share of the money. If we want to progress and not have our young people go to college here and leave for better areas that have better transportation without having to sit in the car for an hour and a half into Chicago and an hour and a half back, we're going to have to fund this forever. The state of Indiana has a billion dollars in its treasury. What good is it doing us sitting there? Villanis Railroad is like myself planting a tree. I don't plant it to sit in a shade. I plant it so my kids and my grandkids can sit in a shade. I think that's something we should remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any others on the floor want to make a comment regarding the item we're discussing this evening?
My name is Kenneth Stevenson. I live at 526 Secret Drive. I own a classic taxi. I support the resolution to provide funds for this rail. My understanding is they're asking for about $5 million. That's approximately $10 per person in Lake County. What that means is, if you think about it, $5 million is about the same as 2 cents on price of gas over the period of a year, figuring that each person uses about 500 gallons per, or 500 gallons a year. So basically, raising the drop in the price of gas 2 cents is basically what we're really doing here. This is a small investment and a small risk for something with a big payoff, not just for us, but again, for our future generations. The cost of the project seems to be somewhat excessive as a whole, but we'll see that when it comes to it. And as far as whether something runs over or doesn't, we always see about where it runs over in the paper, but we don't see where costs run under. I think this investment that the council should make tonight is well worth the risk. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
My name is Diane Mathi. I live on 238 Bluegrass in Shererville. As a Shererville resident, I want you to put money in Shererville and as you've seen in a lot of things that have been happening lately, like Obamacare and E911, that what happens, just want to see what happens when you make a commitment without all the facts and without the money to back it up. That they don't have all the facts.
Thank you.
My name is, as you all know, Mike Neil, 8052 Van Horn Lane in Shererville. I'm just going to say just a couple of words. I wasn't going to, but I feel that a couple of things probably have been left out that I wanted to just say as a citizen. So it wasn't any secret that I was originally against this tax, the 1.5% tax against, levied against us as the taxpayers, but we haven't. And now I think that the sentiment that I feel anyway is that that, those dollars aren't here yet, and I think those dollars, when they do come here, are best spent here in Shererville. I don't think that there is a major benefit to extending the South Shore at this time. It's less than 20% of our residents even travel, from Lake County, travel to Chicago to work. And I would venture to say that probably half of those folks probably drive anyway. But beyond that fact, this new tax, a lot of this has already been spoken for across the county, and I think it doesn't do us a good service to continue to speak for these dollars, because what's going to happen is it's going to create a slippery slope, and we're going to need to raise that to 2%, because we're going to take some of the money that originally wasn't in the plan for this tax. We're going to spend it on something different, and they'll be like, oh, well, we need that money for something else, so let's raise it. And I know that's not necessarily her purview, but I would hope that Shererville would take the side of fiscal responsibility, that they would do what's best for Shererville first. I'm not saying that, you know, to stick it to the other communities, but I think with these tax dollars, I think those are best going to be spent here if we have to have them. Between the initial cost and the operating cost and what kind of benefit is it going to serve the citizens of Shererville and ultimately the citizens of Lake County? I don't see the ridership increasing very much at all because of this. I don't think it's going to help us in one way or the other. So I think that it takes, also I think it takes people away. We're sending people to Chicago, but I don't think people are going to come, oh, I want to go to Dyer, Indiana, or Shererville, Indiana on the train and come down. So I don't think it helps us with economic benefit at all either. I don't think it helps us in one way. So I respectfully disagree with Congressman Viscoski, and I hope that you guys vote this down this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on the floor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. My name is Jim Weezer. I reside at 7348 Winchester Lane in Shererville. There was an article by a week and a half ago, started the business section of the Times, that said that businesses are investing in the city of Chicago more than anywhere else in the United States of America. In any other economic metropolitan zoning statistic area, any other metropolitan area, they're investing in Chicago the greatest. That article didn't include the fact of the recent funding for the digital manufacturing that's going to occur in Chicago, that's going to create thousands and thousands of jobs. It would be awful if Northwest Indiana didn't tap into that resource. It would be negligent if we didn't tap into that resource. You know, the interesting thing about public discourse, I thought I didn't hear the gentleman who spoke first, I didn't hear him say what his name was. Funny thing is, I support this project. He opposes the project, but we happen to agree on something. In fact, we happen to agree, I listened to his arguments, we happen to agree on a couple of things, and I wanted to point those out to you as well in just a second. When Congressman Viscoski speaks about this as a generational imperative, that is exactly what it is. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to know, all you have to do is be a parent of kids that have gone to college and aren't living here anymore. Of kids that go to college and say, why should I come back? There's no jobs. There's nowhere to work. But that's what's happening, and there's a way to prevent that. And the way to prevent that is to provide the access for where good-paying jobs are for college-educated kids and for college-educated people, and that's the city of Chicago. Its gross domestic product is larger than most of the countries in the world, just the Chicago area. And we have an obligation to take advantage of that. I would point out also, for a speaker, there is in fact an exhaustive study that has been done regarding the benefits to Northwest Indiana if this extension is done. It was a, it was a study done by Policy Analytic Institute, the most highly independent policy institute in the state of Indiana that studies these things. And I'm sure you gentlemen know, Bill Sheldraker has had some experience with Bill. He's one of the most respected economists in the state, in this state. He's an independent economist. I've read the study, and the study shows that thousands of jobs will be created, and that that money, when they go, when people go to Chicago to work, they don't stay in Chicago, by and large. If they're living in Northwest Indiana, they come home. They bring their paychecks home. They spend their money here. They'll go to the New Mall. They'll spend their money in this community, and that's money that benefits all of us. And that's why it's so critical, and that's why it's so important that we do this. I recognize the fact that you guys have a tough job to do, and I've seen some of your comments, and I respect them. And I respect what some of the folks say about, you, we've got to repair streets, we've got to repair roads, we have to do things here. Of course we do, and I understand that. But this is something, and I wish I would have thought about the tree and planted the tree and have the grandchildren, because that's pretty neat, and I like that, and I will ultimately use that. But that's a great saying. It is for us. I mean, yeah, it's going to benefit some of us, and it's going to be some, but it's going to benefit our generations to come. But going to the funding, and I'm not going to get into about where the income tax goes and the ceded tax and all that, but I can tell you this, I had the good fortune of having worked on this project with Congressman Viscoski for a number of years. And I can tell you that in almost virtually every instance of a by-state commuter rail in this country, whether it be in New York, whether it be in Philadelphia, whether it be in Washington DC, or whether it be here, the local funding or that match, that match to get those federal dollars, the 250 or 270 million of federal dollars, the funding comes from the state. Only in the state of Indiana do they keep beating you guys over the head and say, hey, if you wanted, LA County pays for it. If it was in Marion County, they wouldn't be saying that. The state of Indiana would be paying for it. If it was a bridge over the Ohio River, the state of Indiana would be paying for it. But because it's Lake County, they say, you find the money. It's up to you to get the money. And they put the burden on your back. And that's what makes it so tough, and that's what makes it so unfair to you local officials. This should have been a complete and total state obligation. But the state didn't assume it, and the state didn't take it, as they never do for our area, and just say, fend for yourselves, folks. And that's when it's difficult, and that's when you make that tough decision, and that's when you stand up, and if you say, we support it, and we're going to do it, that's true statesmanship. That is true statesmanship. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the floor regarding the item here? State your name and address for the record, please.
George Roy, 951 Shererville Drive, Shererville, Indiana. I'm sorry I got here late. I didn't really hear the opening comments. I heard this gentleman here, I think he was referring to me, I was at the last meeting, and that's when I opposed using Senate funds for the local match. Is that, am I correct? Is that what he is speaking to?
No, he was referring to the first gentleman that's here this evening to vote it or to not support it.
All right, well, then I'll start with the things like. I don't know if all of you were here last, the regular last meeting, when I spoke about using the Senate fund. You know, I thought about it, and I reconsidered, and this is why. If you look around the town of Shererville, we have good roads. We don't have any drainage problems. We don't have any sidewalk concerns. All our equipment is modern and up to date. Our employees are well-paid, they get good benefits. And all this was done without Senate funds. So we don't need that Senate money. Let's give it all, let's give 100% of that money for this railroad. If it's such a great idea, if it's such an economic engine, let's make a statement. You know, when the 1.5% county tax was first discussed, there was no mention of a local match for the South Shore. Why was that? Because they knew that if people found out about it, they wouldn't agree with it. Only in probably October or November was the idea of taking part of that Senate money and using it as a local match. It was not discussed before the county council and commissioners voted on it. After the tax was passed, Mr. Viscoski decided that he wanted a part of that local money to go to the South Shore, and he created a committee. And on the committee was one of the county commissioners whose vote was vital to passing that tax. Also, there were several county councilmen that voted for the tax that were on this committee. So they cooked up this deal to take part of the Senate funds and combine it with the funds that they took from Gary, E Chicago, and Hammond Casino Funds, and put it all together, that would be our local match. I don't agree with that, but the 1.5% local income tax is a fact. There's nothing I can do about it right now. So I and every other taxpayer in Lake County has 1.5% less money to spend on all these beautiful stores and beautiful walls. So you better build that thing really quick, because we need an influx of money, because Lake County taxpayers are poorer, and the first train isn't going to run down that trail until, they said, 10 years from now. So in the meantime, who's going to make up this money that we're not able to spend? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding this item here this evening? If not, comments on the floor, yes.
Hello. My name is Kathy LaGrue, and I actually am a Dyer resident. My address is 2337 Rolling Hill Drive. And I know that, I appreciate that I'm able to come tonight, just so that you can kind of hear a little bit from our point of view, a lot of us residents. I don't only speak for myself, I know that there's many in our community that are actually opposed to this state, to this expansion. One of the things is if you ever are in the area where they're proposing to put this, it's on, it would be on the corner of Calumet Avenue and Route 30. If you ever drive in that area, it's very congested. We get 80, 90 floor overflow, and I know it comes in to Shererville too. You see the backup on Route 30 across where they want to put it. One of the residents stated, there's a school there, middle-aged school, 5th through 8th graders, concerned about the train being so close and access to the children. The other thing is, is with the road congestion, we, you know, they say how much this project is going to cost, but who, how are these funds going to, how are the road improvements going to be paid for? I know, like, if there needs to be road improvements on Calumet Avenue, that's a town's responsibility. I was at a meeting that the congressman was at, and I, you know, I had asked him, we, Route 30 is a state road. How is that going to get funded for improvements to help this congestion? And he, and I have witnesses did not answer. All he said was, I have confidence in the town officials of Dyer to be creative economically for the road congestion. So my concern is, we've got, we, we, when, if you watch the video that the congressman had put out, one of the big things that they point out is that this is going to be bringing 5,600 new riders. If you, I don't know if you had the South Shore officials come to your meeting, but they were at ours, and what they tell us, what they told us at our town council meeting was only half will be new riders. The other half will be current and existing riders. That means that as we're promoting this to help all Northwest Indiana, it actually will be taking riders from Hammond and E Chicago, which will affect their own communities and their economy. We, and Metra is actually getting close, they're working on getting a line to Crete. So now, how many riders are actually, will we be pulling from Illinois? So I, my, my concern is, is that the congressman is asking 34% for the next 30 years from all the communities. When you, when they promote this, this is, and this is from the video, and I quote it, that they expect that, that the extension to Dyer, then to Lowell and Valparaiso could bring an economic boom to Northwest Indiana equal to that of Bethlehem Steel in the 1960s. But you have, I asked you, listen carefully to those words. But if it goes to Dyer and then Lowell and Valpo, it will be the biggest economic boom. So if it's going to take 34% for the next 30 years to get to Dyer, and we need to still get to Lowell and Valpo for this big economic boom, how are those, how is that going to be funded? And I know the first, one of the first gentleman question as far as the price tag, I guess. Well, that is the thing. I mean, we've got road improvements and we, more extensions, and, and in the paper last Friday, it, there was an article about the congressman speaking at Lake Station, and the article said that Congressman Viscoski attended the meeting, answered questions about the project, which would cost between 571 million and 615 million. Since January, everything we have read that has said 571 million, now all of a sudden, here we are with 615 million. So my concern is, is I think for all of Lake County, 34% for 30 years is a high price tag for all of us, and I don't think, I think we should not be spending the next generation's money. So thank you.
Any other comments regarding this item on the agenda this evening?
My name is Ken Davidson. I'm a Hammond resident, and I don't really have a position on this. I just have some observations and some questions, questions that I've tried to get answered for a while. With regard to Mr. Weezer's comments, I've read the policy analytics paper also, and in that paper, it says that you'll receive $19.33 for every dollar you invest in this. I'm not sure that anyone believes that. The same studies also said that the Gary Airport Project, at $28 million, was going to create 1,500 new jobs. That project is now over $200 million and has created no jobs, other than consultants. We have the same studies showing that the Lakefront Development Project, almost there's a good fit, tremendous number of jobs. So I don't know. And as far as the rail in Marion County, I believe, and I'm not positive about this, but I believe I had an email where they were going through exactly the same situation right now with a locally funded rail project that's on the table, where there's a local match. The questions that I have are, this council just went through this with E911 and the inter-local agreement, and not having the questions that you had with regard to that agreement answered prior to somebody shoving the paper in front of you and saying, sign off, sign off. And that, to me, seems like what you're doing here. There's not even a, there's not even a fund for you to give the money to if you wanted to right now. If you said, yes, we'll write you a check, we love this project. They can't take it. There's no place for the money to go. We're putting, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, where it needs to be an inter-local agreement before towns can possibly commit to this project. There's no, you know, if, if the project goes bust, if Illinois, if the FTA says Illinois gets their project at something like, you know, I think their project is $700 million for 33 miles, so they're at $40, $50 million a mile, and we're at $80 million a mile, and the feds say, yeah, we think $50 million in a more densely populated area is a better project than $80 million in a less densely populated area. What happens? That's got to be covered in the inter-local agreement. And then the final question, I guess, for you guys, I mean, for anybody that's considering this, is how specifically? Is there some concrete thing that you can point to to your citizens and say, this is how this is going to benefit you people? We're taxing you, we're taking money out of your paycheck, and this is what you're going to get back. And that's, you know, those are the two questions that I think need to be answered. Thank you.
Any other comments regarding this item here? Looks like we got mostly everybody out there. Maybe comments, that's good. If not, public comments on this item are closed. Well, gentlemen, again, as I mentioned during the beginning of the meeting, we had heard of representatives from the Coast Office, Mark Lopez, had come to one of our meetings and discussed this item here with us regarding the request. and discussed this item here with us regarding the request, what they're looking for doing regarding this extension. So, I know since then we've received some information that was forwarded to us regarding some facts that we received from there. Let's want to open up for discussion here at the, at the council level regarding this item. I know it's been asked that we provide a 34% of the seed of money. And just for the record, Jan Schonowski, what's an approximation of what our seed of money will be, our quarter percent?
$624,000 per year.
That's the 34%?
That's the total amount.
And of that amount, roughly then, we're looking around $213,000, 34%?
Between $212,000 and $213,000.
Sure. Thank you. I know we're asked to make a, a commitment and no fund would take place until 2015, I believe it was mentioned on that. And I also understand that a, a fund would be set up at the county level to hold these funds at that time. And if for some reason this project does not go through, that those funds would be returned to each of the communities. Is that what I understand? So, with that being said, councilors, anything that we need to?
Mr. President, thank you. I heard Mr. Lopez's presentation four separate times, most recent of last night. And last night for the first time, Mark indicated in his presentation, in response to the types of inquiries you've made and your analysis assessment, that there was a joint interlocal agreement in development stage that was intended to identify the source of payment, the place of deposit, the holding, handling of the funds collected, the accountability for saying, and related types of terms. And, and I was pleased to hear that because of the need for clarity about how the, you know, tax funds you are collecting will be handled, dispersed, and processed. And Mr. Lopez had absolutely no issue with the action of the Winfield Town Council to commit a 25% portion of the seed of monies that were collected by that town, subject to the end review and completion of review acceptance, if you will, of that joint interlocal agreement. He also reported, and I don't know whether you received this information or not, this again was public meeting dialogue last evening. He also reported that Highland Clerk Treasurer Michael Griffin and County Commissioner Michael Rippey are in the initial stages of that draft for circulation purposes. The conclusion of that discussion, my recommendation to the Winfield Town Council was that if your actions were to consider participation, that you do so conditioned upon acceptance of an interlocal agreement, that you deem appropriate, acceptable, and provided sufficient and satisfactory clearly to commit your funds to, for the purposes that the congressman So, that would be my light counsel to you, given that we haven't seen an interlocal. We know it's in its birthing and infancy stages of development and circulation. And it's important to understand what you are going to do with that money. I presume also that there will be some discussion of the grant process that Mr. Lopez explained and the congressman has explained will be the ultimate complete funding of the project subject to participatory shares of the local communities as local share plus the funding participation of the RDA.
Thank you. Thank the Clerk Treasurer. So, basically by, if we do agree to make any commitment of our seed of dollars towards the project, we can do it based on a, I'm waiting to see a joint interlocal agreement and make sure that it's in there.
I, I would term it conditional approval, or conditional action.
Thank you. Any initial comments from any council members at this time? Would like to start off with their position on the request from the congressman?
I just have a question on finances. Mrs. Belmauski, so the 1.5 will generate 624,000 per year.
Right.
It is the 1.5% of that on the half percent side. A quarter of that half is for public safety and a quarter is for seed, county economic development income tax. And of that seed of money, which would be collected at the opportune of just about $624,000, 34% would be between $212,000 and $213,000 per year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, a couple of quick comments. My, my position is on the, on the whole concept of what Mr. Viscowski's after here, I, I think, I think is a very positive thing. And one thing that wasn't mentioned in any of the comments, and I respect all the comments that the citizens made because it's very important to get your input on, on items like this. But not only is it the people that are working in Chicago, but we lose a lot of our residents to the suburbs of Chicago. And if you go to Naperville and if you go to Burr Ridge and if you go to all the suburbs in Chicago, that's, all them people live in those suburbs of Chicago because they have, they have transportation to get into the city. And what's attracting to Lake County is my 400,000, 300, 400,000, our home here in Shererville is $600,000 in the suburbs of Chicago or 700,000. So, it is going to attract people moving to Northwest area because we get, we get that attraction now already with Illinois people that move into the, into the town of Shererville, Dyer, St. John, Crown Point because of that, because of that one item right there of the expense that it takes to live in the suburbs. So, on a long-term basis, and we have the chance to bring that South Shore here in Shererville, and my job as a councilman is to worry about my citizens in Shererville, and I'm two miles, three miles away or two miles down the road of a new South Shore station to get twice as many, they're estimating twice as many people in Shererville will be taking the train to, to Chicago. I think it's important that we look at it and we approve it. I also, Mr. Oshin answered a lot of questions. I still feel we're at the very early stage of this and he's looking basically as a, as a board to give a commitment. There's a lot of details that has to be worked out. There's definitely an interlocal agreement that would have to be worked out. There's a lot of, a lot of items that would have to be worked out among all 18 cities and towns. So, I think it's real important that we look for the future and we bring, and bring, do our part to help that matter, mostly since Shererville happens to be real close to what this first expansion is going to be. And I believe once that expansion is made, you'll see, you'll see some fast work to keep approving that expansion and they'll have it down to Lowell a lot sooner because the tracks are already there to take it to Lowell. So, it's not a matter, it's not a matter of building track. It's just a matter of, I think once this keeps going, it will be, it'll work fast. In the city of Valparaiso, on the other end of the, of the area, needs that connection too, and I, I think it'll work fast. So, I think it's important for us as a board to make a commitment to this and I would be in favor of making that commitment.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Looking at the, over the course of 30 years, what's being asked of us from the congressman is a $6 million commitment over 30 years. But I think first and foremost, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves. We, as a council, we have had the conversation pertaining to what our needs are for the seed of funds for our residents in Shererville. And when we look at our economic development or capital improvements, Oak Street Project, Kennedy Avenue Project, for example, perhaps our downtown revitalization project. So, I think what we need to do as a council first is evaluate our needs first before we make any type of commitment toward the extension. Now, I'm a writer, a South Shore writer. It would be a lot more convenient for me certainly going to Dyer versus Hammond since I ride the train just about every day. But at this point, I've got more, more questions than answers just in terms of the finances. And there is some question about, you know, what's going to happen beyond the commitment we potentially might make. For example, there's a cost overrun for this project. Is that going to fall on the locals? Where's, where's that responsibility going to fall? What I brought up in the last meeting had to do with the projected upgrades for the current South Shore mine. I believe I projected about $600 million. And what I, what I'm not seeing and looking at, it was a corridor document, the revision from January of this year. Do we know if Nifty has the resources to cover the local match for those existing land improvements? Again, getting back to the, the extension, it's certainly going to be convenient. I think we would see more of a redistribution of ridership. You know, people going to Hammond, any Chicago, going to Dyer and Munster. Could there potentially be, you know, new residents coming to our area? Of course, absolutely there could be. And that could do a lot for our area, you know, for sure. But again, getting back to my original thought, I think we, first and foremost, as a council, need to identify our needs first for these seed of funds before we make any commitment. Thank you.
So, councillor, councilman? So, when I'm saying you're not ready to make any commitment for $0 for the March 31st deadline?
I think we need to decide what, what our needs are for the seed of money before we make a commitment. I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not for any commitment, but I think we, we need to decide amongst us as a council what we're going to do with that money for Shererville first.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You didn't think I was going to be quiet, did you?
This nice segue in from Councilman Connelly. I, I get a little, I, I get nervous. It's my seventh year on the council, certainly there are members up here more senior than I am, but my experience teaches me to be nervous when things are going, moving too I, I'm a project manager by trade, so my first instinct is to focus on the project. Whether or not rail is good for Northwest Indiana to me is very speculative and subjective. I think it, it's relative to the circumstances. I, I mean, I, for example, I think it could be beneficial if it were to go to Lowell and Valpo. I don't see it as being very beneficial going to Dyer. But again, these are speculations. I'm not committed for or against rail in Northwest Indiana in any way, so I don't want any misunderstanding there. However, I do zoom in on the project and, and my radar went off. I just, 30 years as a project manager, I had a lot of experience in estimating and we worked on projects of this nature and the cost seemed very high to me. So, I did some research and I looked up some costs of rail projects. And I won't bore you with all these stats, but what I will tell you is that there's one project for, for $500 million, and this is commuter rail, so it's apples to apples. 110 miles of commuter rail for $500 million. Okay? So, and I found more examples. That's kind of the extreme, but I found more examples. So, I think now my curiosity's up, right? I'm, hey, what's, where's the industry standard? That's what we do as estimators. We look for an industry standard. Is there something that tells us what this should cost? So, I found a website and it's called the about.com public transport and it's by Christopher McKetchie. Just so, I mean, I, I'm assuming he's a valid source. It's, if you look up the website, it looks very valid. He has a lot of different industry standards for what things should cost in especially municipal construction and in particular in public transportation. Commuter rail cost range, 1.3 million per mile to 26 million per mile. Now, that's a, that's a big range, right? 1.3 million to 26 million. Well, I could, I could say to myself, well, the 26 million, it's going to be a short run. They don't own the property. They got to put in tracks. It's, it's the extreme. And the 1.3 million per mile, that's where the tracks are ran. They got to do a few upgrades and, you know, they're probably running long distance. So, it made sense to me. So, then I went back and did the calculation on the South Shore extension. 571 million at eight miles is 71.4 million dollars per mile. That's two and a half times the highest on the industry standard. I, and I got to be honest with you, I haven't had a time, I, I didn't have much time to look at this. I just looked all this up in the last couple of days. So, I haven't had time to really get out there and, but it's, gives me cause for pause. Again, you know, going fast, at the last meeting I mentioned, I thought we're, the study session in February, I mentioned I thought we were moving a little too fast. And I was told, well, this project's been discussed for many years. And I, and I know that's true. When I look at some stories in, in the papers and talked about how going from Munster to Valpo was not a good idea and going from Gary to Valpo, now I saw all those stories. And, but never before were we talking about a local match in any way. And as, as, on January 29th, this council passed a capital improvement plan for the distribution of economic development income tax funds. And nowhere on here do we list anything about making a contribution to the South Shore. So, it's been less than 60 days, and it's actually right around 30 days, that this has been brought to our attention. Now, though, anybody who's been in government for any period of time would tell you to make this kind of commitment on 30 days of research is probably not good government. And I'm not saying I'm not, there might be a very good reason for some of these things to be happening. I don't know, but I think we need to find out. The other thing too is, and I, I found this out a few, a few weeks ago, thanks to some of the residents who are sending me information on this project or about commuter rail. Metra has a proposed line called the Southeast Service, which they've done all their studies as well. It's a line that, it's a, it's a line that would run from downtown Chicago to Balmoral, approximately 10 miles west of where the South Shore extension would be. Their, their estimated cost is 778 million to go 33 miles, which is 23.6 billion per mile, which is right at the top end of the range, but you know, it's Illinois, so I can understand it's expensive over there. But still far, far less than, than the South Shore cost per mile. I, I asked people to get some information on this for me and all I'm getting back is, oh, that project's on hold, that project's on hold. But yet, when you go on the Metra website, it sure doesn't look like it's on hold. So, I think, I think this is a question that needs to be answered, honestly. I, I had a colleague of mine try to contact Congresswoman Robin Kelly and she did not reply. So, it's, it's almost, I mean, I, I can't believe someone can't just give a definitive answer on where this project stands, but I, I think it's something we need to find out. And then the other, and again, back to Councilman Connelly's comments, we have a number of economic development needs in the town of Shererville. We're about to take Kennedy Avenue through to Route 30. We would like to connect Indianapolis Boulevard to Kennedy Avenue via Oak Street going under the rail. And we need this. We can't just keep building buildings over on 41 and not have some type of relief for traffic. Now, we do have a, a TIV fund that, in, this is the TIV district and we have a TIV fund and it's, it's building up funds nicely, but that's, that's not to say it's going to cover everything. We just don't know. And I think, I think we need to do this. And the other thing too, along with the road and infrastructure improvements, I think we need to invest in a traffic study on Route 41. I'd like to see us partner with Indot Highland and take it from 45th all the way down to 77th, and start looking at things we can do with this money to fix our traffic problems. So I, you know, I don't want to say I'm out, because I never want to say I'm out. I guess I would be prepared to do something very small. I would prefer it not be a percentage. I would prefer that it be a number, the way Griffith did last night. I would think somewhere in the $40,000 range would be where I would be comfortable, and I would, and contingent upon approval of an interlocal agreement. And, you know, and if we get through all this, and we find out later on that this really is a good thing, and maybe the costs are justified, maybe there's a mistake. Maybe we could do, maybe there's something that needs to be changed, to where, maybe the costs have fallen to a position where we won't need to contribute 34%. So thank you very much, that is my comments. Mr. Congressman?
Mr. Genslov?
First of all, I'd like to say that I've lived in this community for 35 years. I've had the pleasure to serve on this council for 15 years, under Democratic control, and also under the Republican control. And I always have to say that the fiscal responsibility of this town has always been at the forefront. We have always done a very good job, Mr. Malinowski and council members, in spending money in the most efficient and responsible way. But I also see another side of the coin, and that is growth. If you don't look into the future and take the chances, or some people call it risk, whatever, then you go nowhere. It was just like all that debate that we had on the mall, on the main, Chatsworth Main Street. You know, the deal almost just totally fell apart, people walked away from the table. We finally got people back to the table, did a little negotiating, more negotiating, and we got things happening. Traffic isn't a major concern around here, it always has been. There's really no major fix to it. Yes, we can have studies done and that, and maybe they can readjust the lights or do something, but we're not really going to ever take care of the traffic problems. Those problems need to be taken care of way back in the 60s, when there were other council people, and they should have looked at putting off, putting roads off to the side. When you go down to Schaumburg, and you get to that big mall, Woodfield, and that, you just veer off, and the roads keep moving, and everybody goes into those little places that they want to go shop at. That'll never happen. Can't move the major retail stores far enough apart to put in those, those roads. So traffic will always be a problem. Will the rail help take away some of that traffic? It will, because people are not going to be commuting as far. I lived in Chicago all my life before I came here. You know, everything over there is moved by rail, or moved by bus, taxi cab, you name it, it's there. I would just hate to miss the opportunity to take advantage of the opportunity. There's a lot of pluses to it. Yeah, we don't know where it's going to go, what the number's going to be, but it is a great opportunity to move forward for the future. And we're not talking now, we're talking 10, we could be talking 15 years down the road, but I have to think of my son and the other children that live in this community, and hopefully say that we're going to make a good decision. It will raise the assessed valuations. When people come to Dyer, Sherwood, St. John, what are they looking for? They are looking for the amenities. They are looking to see first of all, number one priority are the schools. Do they have good schools to service the kids? Then the next thing is, is the transportation. How can I easily commute more from here to Chicago, and how fast can I get to the highways and everything else? So yes, I think, you know, there's sort of valid points here that, you know, it has been a quick decision, but, you know, something has to be done. And I just feel that, with that being said, that I would have to support what the Congressman is asking us to support. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve it. And I wrote down what you were saying, Mr. Oshin, Oshin, upon conditions of our vote and the conditions set by the council, by the Congressman. Is that how we would have to?
No, I, I would recommend that it be an approval conditioned upon an acceptable joint interlocal agreement being circulated and acceptable to you with terms and conditions there.
Okay, well, that would be, that would be my motion.
Just a question on the motion, was there a percentage on that, or is it what the Congressman was asking for?
I want the Congressman was asking for.
The motion affects 34% of our CED money then, correct?
Yes.
Has been a motion for, by Councilman Genslov, to maybe verbal commitments for 34% of our CED money, which is approximately $212,000 towards this investment. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski, our, our town budget in the town of Sherwood is? 12, 40, 50 million?
I would say closer to 30, 35 million.
30 to 35 million. And, and our decision tonight is, they're asking for $200,000 out of a 35 to 40 million dollar budget for the, for this project and for the future of what it will do for this area. So I think it's a very small amount compared to, for what, what it will help us on. So I will second Mr. Genslov's motion.
There's been a motion and seconds, any discussion at this time? I'd like to make a few comments. Yes, I do believe that this investment that we're looking at making here will benefit Sherwood, it will benefit the next generations, as was mentioned before by some of our community members here in Sherwood. It's economic development is what we're looking at doing here in our community. Now, this money's not for roads. I, I think this money is for economic development. Sure, you can repay a road, but we have fun with roads, and we've done a very good job physically as council, previous councils, in making sure we maintain the roads in our community. It will increase the assessed valuation once it's completed. And again, that's an investment in our community. It was mentioned earlier regarding, you know, this is $60 million in over 30 years of money that we going towards this. On the contrary, there's $120 million what's left for our community here for next 30 years. $400,000 a year is what we're also going to be keeping to utilize for other economic developments in our community. So there is that number that hasn't been meant to be there this evening. We have other communities in Lake County that have also made a commitment towards this rail. Communities that probably won't benefit as much as Sherwood benefits with this rail. You have Highland, Munster, Holbert, the county itself had made a commitment, Whiting, Griffith, my understanding, St. John, they committed also. So there are a lot of communities that are going on to this, and, which is very good for our whole area. It's time that we invested in rail in our communities. Mr. Attorney, Councilman Oshin? Just a question. These are verbal commitments. Now, I, I know that we talked about, as mentioned here, about putting together an economic plan for these monies, whether it's the full $600,000 or it's $400,000. And over the years that I've been on this council, we've done a very good job in putting together economic plans, so I'm sure we will continue to do that. If for some reason we want to, if it does pass tonight for 31st, if we want to lower that dollar amount, because there's more needs that we feel we want to use that money for in Sherwood itself, could we make that adjustment before the joint interlocal agreement is signed?
You certainly may before the interlocal is signed. Once you sign the interlocal, there will be some hard terms, I would anticipate some hard terms, and you may want to consider the fine tuning of your commitment. The fine tuning would be the fluctuation that could occur in the gross CED that would be collected annually. For example, if the income tax, 34% would grow with it, and you may want to look at how you assure yourself of a revenue stream, these would be those kinds of changes. But I would anticipate that to be the subject of terms that will be proposed in the interlocal agreements that's forthcoming.
Okay, good. You know, it was also mentioned regarding a TIF funding right now that we've used to partner up with developments in Chatsworth, for example. You know, we studied that plan quite a bit, and with the revenue that's to be generated out of that TIF plan, it was also mentioned that it's going to generate more money than we need by projects. So with that economic tool right there in TIF funding, I know this council is reviewing that, that we're going to have more money in TIF funding to spend on other economic developments in this community than, than we have to do. So I mean, that, that's also another financial tool that we already currently have that's in place that'll help benefit Sherwood. With that, with that being said, I call for a vote.
Mr. Tippie?
No.
Mr. Conley?
No.
Mr. Genslov?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Troxel?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I open business from the floor. Business from the floor.
I'm shocked that a Democratic congressman came and asked here, this was a volunteer to Democratic, Republican. Does this remember all these people that come here, that you're talking about, that you're hopeful for and all that? You're going to need him, and him, and much, many more of them, and many more of them, and many more of all the other things that we're going to have to pay for in this community when all these people come, if they come. Where's that money going to come from? If you've got more money than you need, you need to be showing that on our tax base. I'll expect to see that on my taxes over here in Sherwood. That number goes down per hundred, because you just said you got more money than you need.
No, Mr. Proctor says, the TIF district will end up having more money with the projects we have set. So we're not there yet. I mean, the Almond TIF project will cost us extra dollars, and we're 5% of the front row. So after that's paid for, there could be some additional dollars, or we can then close that TIF district in front of that.
That's good.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the floor?
I'm Mark Harkenringer, 6860 Swan, and I'm sure there's a lot of people begging to go to East Chicago, Gary, Hammond, because of the South Shore. You know, 30, when we have accidents on 65 or 894, I-30 is no problem, there's no traffic at all. Why would we want to spend, if we have this money, why would we want to spend money, say, for the only, only Antelope? Ridiculous. I think that's probably number one.
Thank you.
And it's amazing that we always have three, two, two or three, depending upon who's in power.
Any other public comments? Seeing here, don't speak to your turn. Thank you for your time.